I don't know if she needs to be introduced. They worked with her.
I met with them yesterday.
For like three hours.
For the video recording, do you wanna?
Oh, alright. Would you like to introduce yourselves? First of all, to the, and then we'll have our staff introduce ourselves. How about the board first?
Regina and I'm free.
Vanessa Robinson.
Katie Blank.
Lindsay Miller, Eska Pollard.
Gina Sales.
June Garcia.
Carrie Wilson.
Mark Foster.
And does everybody, is all of the board know the staff positions? Everybody's aware of what the staff positions are?
Not really.
Okay, let's name them.
You services coordinator.
IT coordinator.
Collection and technical services coordinator.
You guys know these scanners? Alright, sounds good. Thank you very much for everything you've done in for coming here now.
That's right, we know you're working with folks on sound as well, so. Appreciate it.
And so for for some of the staff, this initial part is going to be a bit of a repeat, though. But it was, it was really important to me to have a chance to meet with them yesterday, to have some sense of how things are done here, and especially in terms of technology, what might be possible. You can mentally drift away for a bit. Not too far, because I need you to. So, what I'd like to do, would like to do is begin by having a shared understanding of what, how, what you think the concerns are. Help me summarize, or summarize for me, what you've heard from the community when they've come to your board meetings. That might be addressed by the issue of library card revision. So, I mean, I was, I was at one board meeting, so I heard some things there that I certainly would have been able to summarize. So, what are the concerns that need to be addressed? What are the concerns that perhaps members of the community don't feel are being heard by this board in this organization?
Anybody can talk?
Anybody can talk. Well, actually, actually, I would prefer at this point for the board to talk.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't mean they can't use, please. Any sexually explicit material for children.
Okay.
Whether it be straight, gay, doesn't matter, sexually explicit material in books or, you know, whatever else, movies, I don't know.
Videos, music?
Yeah.
You're not gonna say.
No. That's what I hear the most concerned about. That's right. And when I say children, some say, you know, the, what is it, the youth is what the
Young adult.
Young adult and youth. Some specify eighteen and unders, some specify the twelfth and under.
Okay.
Boy, I hate to like put an attorney spin on things.
We listen to that.
But I can't help it. So, I mean, I, I hear terminology bandied about, and for me as a lawyer, there's, there's really two different issues. There's obscenity, and there's pornography, and the two are not the same. And so just gonna go to the, the concern, as I understand it, is works that may be considered pornographic necessarily, may not meet the legal definition of obscenity, are concerning to the, to the public. Within that layer, within those, that confine, then you have the children's section and you have young adults. I hear two concerns from the community. The first one being that children should not have access to material that is beyond the children's section, because if they have unrestricted access, then they are getting material that we obviously, as the library, not deemed suitable to be in the children's section, but yet if you have just a library card for our system, you can access anything within it. So, there's that. And then the, the, you know, for lack of a better word, I guess, you know, porn, sexually explicit content in the adolescent section of the library. And I, I think, I guess this one, the la, the last thing I would mention, which is much more amorphous, is this idea that the library is not doing its part to protect our children's innocence. And so, you know, I hear that from the community, and I want to assure the community that this is not a, you know, this library is not trying to groom children, or make them, you know, lose their innocence prematurely. Everybody is, okay, enough said.
Other, other things?
Are you, can you answer our question? Can you ask the question? What's the question again?
What are you hearing from the community that this board needs to address?
I'll tell you what I'm hearing from the community. I don't know if the board can, does it profound concerns about anything of the, of LGBTQIA+ in our library. I'm also starting to hear concerns about things like demonology, which I don't even know if that means. And and I'm, I can't determine sometimes whether the discussion concerning obscenity slash pornography is or is not meaning LGBTQIA+. I can't make that determination, because it seems like it's, it's all one big puzzle for people. And so, that's another thing that I hear.
With, with either or both of those topics, is the concern primarily for children? Or is it a concern for the collection at large and people of all ages?
I would say it's a most concern for anything for eighteen and, for eighteen under, eighteen, eighteen under, under eighteen.
Okay. Is the concern that you've heard expressed, again, I was only at one board meeting, primarily or exclusively about the collection? Or is it about other programs and services that the library offers?
Well, they do touch on the one program.
Okay.
But that goes along with what Katie was saying. The LGBT.
There's only one program, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, some people seem to specify what I said originally, how some people do specify straight or gay inappropriateness for kids. So, some, some might not, but some, you know, specify.
I'm gonna add on that, the gender fluidity versions of this, which are very loose terms, but how do you define it? And at what age do you deal with it?
So, again, primarily as it relates to materials available to children or anything that relates to children.
That's what I've heard, and then the question is, what's, what age is children?
Yeah, maybe at this point, I should just say minors. I mean, minors.
Okay. It means it under eighteen. I'll take another one on the what role the parents have, what the community thinks they should have, and how we have as many variations as we have speakers. But what that means, I'll sort of interpret it.
Well, on that word, then it's also what role does the library have in parenting?
Yep.
Which mainly leads to, to the
Good. Thank you.
Of course, he takes good notes.
That's good, because I'm taking notes, but I'm also trying to listen to nobody, but you have to try and read this afterwards, except for me. Other things? With, with the board's permission, I'd like to pose the same question to staff, to see if they heard something different when they were attending board meetings, or other times otherwise.
Are we giving permission to them?
This is a board session, and so.
I'm teasing, we welcome that.
Okay, okay, well, I mean, normally, the openness would come from the chair, since I'm sort of taking over this board. Yeah, I'm advocating, advocating right here. Okay. So, staff, anything that you've heard that you?
I've also heard discussions about witchcraft and demonology, witchcraft. I think those are about it, and there just seems to be confusion as to what age is a child and what our collection is. So, there's great confusion about that.
So, the demonology, witchcraft, again, is it primarily for children, or is it for minors?
Minors.
Okay, for minors, okay.
I also hear confusion from our attendees about materials that we don't actually have in our collection, and that are not even children's materials, but are adult materials that are portrayed as children's materials.
Anything else? I'm not trying to cut it off, this is like standing the room here. And this is not your only chance to get these things on the floor, but if we're going to try and develop policy that addresses things, let's try and make sure that we cover the things that we, we need to address.
Just so we haven't heard anything from you. Do you have anything to add?
None, but.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, I want your voice to work.
Well, I think it's good. Okay, yeah. And, and a minor clarification. I mean, clarification using the term minor, not that it's quite important in that sense of minor. Okay. What I was going to do, and now I'm just not going to do, because I've given you a handout instead. And staff saw this yesterday, is that I think there's a lot of confusion about what is policy? And what is, what this policy mean? And so, is I jokingly, not only jokingly, but the staff, yesterday, you're about to now get an SBL, a short boring lecture, not to be confused with an LBO, which is a long boring lecture, about what policy is. And I will readily admit that this is my personal opinion, and you're welcome to change it, do anything else you wish with it. I was asked two decades ago.
That's the last century.
You know, stronger, it was actually 2003.
Okay.
To write a book for the Public Library Association about policies. Because there was a lot of, there's always been a lot of confusion about it. And so, a colleague and I came up with this book with the condition that we would not tell people what our policy should be, because that wasn't our business. But that what our role should be in putting this book together was twofold. One, to identify a process that libraries could go through to assess the policies they had. But, and, and then the appendix, to provide some framework for policy discussion on the part of the board. So, for example, and we call the section templates. So, for example, there's a template in there about meeting rooms. So, there'll be questions about, you know, who can book the meeting room, you know, is there a charge? If so, how much? How far ahead can they book a meeting room? Lots and lots of questions. The intent, not to tell you what to put in your policy, but to help you understand what you might want to ask when you're putting together your policy. So, you don't later say, oh, gee, we didn't address the issue of whether you could book our meeting room every week for the next six months. We didn't address the issue of whether or not you could serve alcohol. Or we didn't address the issue whether someone who doesn't live here could book our meeting room. So, that was the intent of the templates, was to provide a framework for you to make decisions. So, what you see here, we identified that the policies, the purpose of the policy is to, you know, provide a mechanism for library managers and staff to translate the library's service priorities into action. They're the primary tool, the purging that all staff have the information that they need to do their jobs. In the absence of information, staff are left with making, you know, their best call decisions, because they don't know. To make sure that all members of the public are treated equitably, and know what they can expect from the library, and provide support for library staff and members of the library governing body in the event of legal action. In this case, should, should the library, you know, either do something inadvertently or unintentionally, which they shouldn't have done. So, with those policies still, good policies, in my opinion, they define current practice. They reflect the priorities. They're current, comprehensive, and consistent. All staff can find them, and they're easily accessible, and user-friendly, and they're in compliance with all local, state, and federal regulations. Most of this is sort of like a non-brainer, or no-brainer, but writing it down wasn't as easy as it sounded. So, when we, if you flip your paper, when we talk about policy, it's into this fuzziness about what part is the board's part to establish? What parts, the staff's part to do? When, what's a policy, and what, what is not policy? So, believe it or not, we couldn't find any definitions that applied to the library field when we did this, so we developed the following ones. And that policy being the generic term for all the pieces that I think are subsequently part of a policy. No-brainer, a policy manual, in this case, remember, twenty years ago, a lot of this was written down in print, which of course was impossible to keep up to date. Now that they're almost all electronic, on the website, the public can find them, the staff can find them, they can easily be updated. What governs a, a lot of what happens in libraries is what we define as practice. It's just the way things are actually done. May or may not be supported by policy, and it's generally oral tradition, often conveyed as a part of staff orientation. It can be very subjective, and having worked in, and sort of as a director in large libraries with multiple branches, I can tell you the practice varies from branch to branch to branch. You all think you're doing the same thing, and, you know, they're not, because regulations or policies weren't put in place, not because people choose to be color different, in the absence of of clarity, which is why we call the book From Chaos to Clarity. You know, people are going to do what makes sense to them. So, the way I think it's helpful for libraries to address this is to think of their policy in the broadest sense with three different parts. The first part's the policy statement, usually one or two sentences that describes the why. Why do we do this? And as it says, it's usually written from the customer point of view, and they are approved by the board. This is usually a nice, I hate to say generic statement, but it's like, often when they're written, it's kind of like, well, of course. Yeah. So, in this case, why do we have library cards? We'll get to that question in a few minutes. The regulations are where the rules come into play, usually written as declarative sentences. They describe what needs to be done to implement policy. So, for example, in the meeting room, for example, you know, the policy would say that you can only book a meeting, I'm making this up. You know, you can only book a, a meeting room four times in a six-month period, unless nobody else is using it, because you want to provide as many people as possible with access to booking a meeting room. That may be a silly rule, but it, it's that level of specificity that, where you're trying to show what, what staff should, should and should not do. And you get to proceed, how to implement that rule comes over to staff. So, whether they have online forms, or whether there's something else to be filled out, or how it's publicized, that's all the how. The boards don't get involved in how. Board should be setting the policy statement itself and the regulations. And the last little bit that you would seldom see as a board, or what we refer to as guidelines. And, and this is best practice, that's often used for training. So, for example, and, and please, Karen, jump in if I start to make up really silly things here. So, for example, you might have a guideline on how to do a good story time. And it might say that, you know, you don't, you try to choose three to four books for a story time, that you try and do, or you include some sort of finger play, or some activity that gets the children up and moving now. Obviously, you wouldn't do that if you had, you know, infants, and then you'd have a different kind of regulation, that you might include a craft. And so, it would be that kind of thing, that how you want staff to do something, but it's not like you must do this. But it's for like best practice. Does that, does that make sense? So, those are the terminology that we have tended to use. And what the end result is a policy that is seldom many pages long. It is almost never a narrative. It's a lot of short statements that, when put together, cover, cover the water ground, whatever you're trying to do. They're also usually intended to be fairly narrow in scope. So, for example, instead of having a circulation policy, you would have potentially many policies. How to get a library card, what your loan periods are, how to handle something that's lost. You know, so that the staff member or the pole, when they're trying to find things, isn't waiting through page after page after page. But instead, it's like, this is how we do this, this is how we do this, how, how we do this. Makes sense? Generally? Sort of, I'm one of those people that if I don't see, you know, kind of people looking puzzled, or jumping in to ask questions, I'm going to assume that at least I should keep talking. Somebody's asking me anything?
Keep talking.
Keep talking. Okay. Well, the good news is, is now that you need to talk, because we've reached that part of the process. I'm now going to pass around two documents that are the same. Same content. One just has the questions we're going to be talking about, the others in case you want to take notes. So, I'm going to pass them in opposite directions, but I probably should keep copying myself to make sure that I know. So, that's why I know. Feel like I'm going over this very quickly, and but never going to come to the meat of it. When, when I've done this kind of training for staff, or, you know, for a diverse audience of staff, in other words, staff from various organizations, this usually takes about a half a day or longer, because they have, because they have so many questions about things, but that's okay. One has space to write the, the same, same pieces of paper. What's happened?
Nothing, Judy, about the single page.
I have a two pager.
Well, then it didn't get passed to you. Okay, we have
There's so many.
There, there we go.
You know, they kind of converged at you, so that's why.
Okay, here I focus to us.
That's what I was.
I mean, it's coming.
Thank you. I don't want to go away. No, I saw him too.
Okay, alright. Everybody has two sheets of paper. Actually, you don't need two sheets, unless you want to take notes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to be, some of these questions are going to sound really stupid. That's okay, I'm going to ask them anyway. Why do we have library cards? Because we want our stuff to come back. Yeah, okay, what else?
You can keep track of how many, how, how, how the library's been used.
Okay, yeah. You can gather statistics from that.
But we have no knowledge about what people check out. Just because you have a library card, there's no knowledge of what people check out.
Confirming it. Well, well, there's, there's knowledge until they bring it back.
Okay, so you know the title of the book, Put You Into Balge.
Right, yeah. We treat those records confidentially, but we know that you have it.
So, we can come get it, right?
Yes. Okay.
I'm assuming too, I mean, you could just put everything behind the counter or something, but I think it's kind of empowerment to have a card and go seek out the material, and, you know, check out, unattended.
Other things?
It makes it really easy to check out, if you can do it, you know, and then unlock.
On the self-check machine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to start test. So, I'm going to give you some other information too. I mean, it also makes sure that the people who are entitled to use your library are using your libraries. In other words, someone's not coming in from, you know, across town or across the country and taking your stuff and you don't know who they are. So, usually libraries restrict a library card to either those who live in your jurisdiction, or with whom you have an agreement, or people, for whatever reason, who have paid a fee, because that's part of your other policy. So, it's, it is sort of a, just to make sure that the people who are supposed to be, have access to your things, have access to your things. They have other reasons for having a library card?
Cool. It's just cool.
We sent wonderful peanut's cartoon where one of them gets their first card in, sort of like, you know, been accepted into the world of, you know, of information. I'm going to go on to the second. And this is framed as a positive statement. Why do you offer an option for cards with different borrowing privileges? And the reason it's worded that way is, if you're not going to do it, you wouldn't have a policy on library cards for minors. So, in this case, the real question to you is, why would you want to have a card for minors?
To protect minors from ideas, or, well, concepts that they are not ready to deal with yet. I could damage them.
What else?
To give families knowledge of what they're, wait, let, let me see this. To give families tools to use the library in ways that would work for them.
Sure, did you have something you wanted to add, please?
Yes, that was like ten seconds ago.
Well, then, jump back in with we'll probably get to anyone another question.
Yes, and to help reestablish public trust, okay, so going along with what Katie said. Oh, we haven't, when you're talking about restricted different cards with different privileges, it also allows fam, well, I like it that you can either choose to use it or not use it.
We didn't get there yet. Right now is why, why do you want to do this? These are all good reasons. Other things? Staff?
I mean, I just have a general statement of like parental responsibility, and taking the burden off the library for, for not having limited access.
And, and this is one of the, sort of, areas where some of this gets intertwined, in the sense of, of what you can do with a card is one thing, and what you can do with things in the collection is something else. And move forward to this of the areas where those two intersect. Alright. Again, this is not a one-time-only piece, so if any, if you think of anything else on any of the questions we passed, please jump in. So, some of these questions address issues that you already have in place, but the first one doesn't. So, if you were going to establish an opportunity to have for a minor to have his, her own card, would you require that an adult in that parental unit, as my kids would call it, have a card as well? in that parental unit, as my kids would call it, have a card as well? So in other words, make, make it so, Michelle, could you come in and get cards for your kids? But you don't have the card, you don't have to have a card yourself at all. So do you want the adult to have a library card too? Or is that they can or they don't have to?
Well, would the adults have to be at least in the system in case a book went missing and they had to pay for it?
They, they would have, in this case, they, they would be the responsible legal entity for their child because they would have authorized the child to have the card. But it doesn't mean that they would have to have it. Up to you.
I don't think they'd have to have a card.
I think it would be good for them to have a card, but that might be a deal breaker for some people and then their kids wouldn't be able to get a card.
Okay, but if they didn't have to have a card, then the information on how to retrieve a book would still be available.
Correct, because right now, um, when a child gets a card, which gives them access to everything, it, probably guys, um, they, the parent doesn't have to. But the parent is still signed that they're going to be responsible for what their child takes out on the child's card, what, the child, the card the child has now. So if you say no to this, it would be a continuation of your current policy.
You guys, I love this. You guys want me to answer a certain way, let me know.
We're, 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 we're not here to influence.
No, no, no.
Provide facts and what, what can be done with the system, what currently is, what, what, what some of these decisions.
It was just.
Like on the back.
It was hilarious though, how you were all, both, all three of you were looking at me and like, oh, I'm not going to answer right.
So right now, what's the policy? Can a kid get one without the parent having it? But the kid's card is all access.
The kid's card is all access. All the contact information is on the child's card, along with the name of the parent who signed them up. It's not linked to an active library card on the parents', but we have that information.
Okay.
Why would we demand somebody get one if they don't want them? Is there any reason why it would do that?
No, but some places do. So again, you get to choose. But I think, Michelle, if encouraging them to do that, um, makes sense. And depending how you work through some of these other questions, if, if you do end up um having a library card for a minor, which is in some ways blocked from other materials in the collection, but now, you know, Johnny needs this book to, to do, you know, his science project and it's in the adult collection. Then if mom or dad or somebody had a card, then they could check that book out for the child. So that would be the advantage of, of, of parent, parent or guardian having a card also.
June, I might have something to add.
Please.
With previous one, I'm not sure if I do or not. Uh, if we had a minor's card.
Right.
Called that. Would it be mandatory or do the parents say, no, my child doesn't need that?
Doesn't he what?
The minor's car. I mean, a minor's car with restrictions.
Yeah, it's a great question. We're going to get to it soon.
Okay.
Hold that thought. Try, trying to build these questions is somehow whether they, if they flow. Um, my former business partner used to talk about things being intertwined. And this is very much one of those intertwined things. Okay, so the answer to this is, no, they don't have to, but it would be nice if they did. Okay, so does a library require proof of identity and current as, uh, address within the district? The answer to that right now is yes, because you want to know who they are. Uh, the staff has good procedures um in place to make sure that they know who you are and that, you know, that what constitutes form of ID. So it's, they want something that shows your address and something that shows your picture. So for those who have a license, you've got both in one place. But if you don't have them in one place, you might have a, a picture on your bank card because you've just moved here. But you've got your electric bill from your new house, but you don't have your new driver's license yet. So that together, those two pieces would work. So here's an example where if you said yes to this, in the procedures, the staff would outline types of things that would fit this criteria. You don't have to worry about all of it. But it would seem to me you would like to know who they are and that they actually live here. I'm just going to take silence as consent. Okay, this is not the hard part yet. Hang on there. Okay. Um. Do, does the library require a parent's or legal guardian's authorization for a child or young adult? Now here I've started to use two terms, um, to acquire a card. And if so, you do now. If so, at what age does a child or a young adult no longer require a parent's or legal guardian's signature?
Isn't that 18? Isn't it 18?
Yeah. So right now it's 18. Are you comfortable with that for now?
If it wasn't, say it was 15, I would assume that would mean that the parent's information wasn't backing up their card, the kid's card, right? Because they're doing it without their parents knowing it.
Right.
So who would, what information would you have if that child lost a book?
That's information. Yeah, I think that since the parents are legally responsible for materials, that they would have to give their consent.
Okay, so, so basically this is, at what age does a child or adult no longer require a parent or legal guardian's signature? That would be, I'm hearing 18.
18.
Okay. Scanning, scanning, 18, only one, only one. Okay. Oh, now we're getting into the part that we really have to have to think. And now we're doing new graph. So if you're going to establish cards with different borrower types, and that's the terminology that we're going to use in the computer to distinguish between one type of card and another, that then govern the circulation of materials. In other words, what they can borrow, what kind of cards would you like to establish? And so I've said here, for example, please, that, that, this is not, I'm not giving you a recommendation, I'm giving you an example. Um, but we did discuss this at great length yesterday. Um, so what we'd like you to think about is, um, should you have, or would you like to have, um, a card of four, for children who are under the age of 12? Now, I'm going to jump over this pretty quickly and point out, when we get to question five, you'll be able to establish what a child could do with that card. And later we'll get to the point about whether or not, you know, that parents would be selecting what card or legal guardian, I'm going to keep saying parents just for the sake of not going to. Whoever has legal responsibility with this child. Um, that they, the parent will be involved in making the decision about what kind of card a child would have. That, that you, the library would not be deciding. Just getting back to your first statement, that this would be a matter of parental responsibility and, and they would get to choose what's best for their child slash children. Okay? So. So we went round and round yesterday, um, about young adult. Um, so we've offered two items here for you to consider. Um, one of the reasons we, again, jump in guys, if I'm just saying things. One of the reasons we said child for children 12 and under is for the most part, that is how the, your current children's collections and services are um set up. Oh, so it's um basically through elementary school, recognizing that some kids might, you know, be 11 when they leave elementary school, other kids might be 13, kids that are being homeschooled, you know, grade itself is differently relevant. So that's why we just sort of picked 12.
But does, to the extent that the library still uses the Dewey Decimal System, which I really don't know the answer to that, but um just like still coding, very good classifications, does the catalog, um, if it is uh, for material that's for 12 and under, does, is it coded with a J? Is it coded juvenile?
Yes.
And that would be true like in, in this, in the C I N world?
Yes. Okay, so, so you would be able to tell from the catalog, um, that it was um, a nonfiction book for young children about penguins or beetles or pick a topic. The same, basically the same number, perhaps more decimal point digits would be if you had a book in young adult and if you had a book in adult. So. And don't ask me to pick up numbers anymore because it's been way too long since I did any, but if you want to know, these great folks will tell you. So then we talked about young adult. And getting back to when you were helping us define what issues you were trying to address was that in some cases, what may be appropriate for an older minor is not necessarily what you would want to have access to for a younger minor. So that's why we said, gee, what, you have a young adult collection now. Some of the concerns that we heard expressed were that the items in the young adult collection weren't appropriate in some cases for any young adult or in some cases may have been appropriate for an older young adult, if that makes sense. You know, the 15, 16, 17 year old, but anybody who's been around kids very much knows that the difference between a 13 year old and a 17 year old can be pretty profound. And not to mention that all 13 year olds and all 17 year olds aren't the same. So we're bringing forward to you at least, bringing forward to you two suggestions. Not that you do both, but that you do one or the other for something different. That, that the young adult collection would start at age 13 in terms of, of the, the, what this card could be. And then it would end at some other age.
So this would also, the, the, say you choose the 13 to 15, then that would also mean modifying what's in young adult right now.
I would say yes to that, but I would, yes, I would say yes and the staff will agree that the answer to that is yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out here and say I want 13 to 15, just saying.
Can you repeat your question, Katie?
Um, if, so we already have, if we're going to establish a card for kids 12 and under, that's already set up. That's just fine. But if we establish a, a young adult card, which we're looking at right now, and we're choosing between ages, between ages 13 to 15 or 13 to 17, I don't see how we're solving any problems if we keep the ages 13 to 17. But if we have it from, I'm just throwing it out in the, partly for the sake of time. If we have a young adult card for ages 13 to 15, that is also, I, that's a really easily said and a monumental amount of work for staff, but it is a, um, we would have to adjust the young adult department to make sure that young adult, that books in there are for ages 13 to 15. We have a whole bunch of books that are um, by the, by the publisher for high school kids, you know, so.
Which right now with your definition of young adult being 13 to 18.
Yeah.
Is where.
No, 12 to 18 is what young adult has been taught to have lately.
Yes, so we have 3 to 4, 5 to 11.
Okay. And here, here you wanted children to be 12. Yeah, just for simplification there.
Not only that, it makes sense in terms of what the public is saying to us as well.
What do you think?
So do you have another section that is for the 16 and 17 year olds? What do you call that card?
Adult. Open access.
Access for borrowers.
Yeah, yeah.
So how does that differ from um having um anyone under the age of 18 has to have a parents?
Right, well, the, the parent could, they chose to restrict their child to 13 to 17 section if they chose to do so.
I voted for 13 to 15.
I'm just saying that that's not, that would be resolved.
Does it, oh, does it, does it continue to be called young adult? That strikes me as odd.
Uh, it, it can be called anything you wish to, but for the purposes of this section, and since election is currently labeled young adult, it seemed easier for us to continue calling it that. Um, if you were to change the name of it, that would require at least two things, jump in guys, it would require restickering the outsides of the items.
All books.
Or the books in that collection. And it would require a changing of the code slash classification number in the computer.
What does the Dewey Decimal System, what, what are, does it have?
Yeah.
So the juvenile books has a J. What, how are, how are young adult books coded? Y. They all have a Y. This for me, I mean, I'm kind of mulling, of course, getting input and, you know. I'm kind of thinking 13 to 17 because if it's not appropriate to minors, then it's not appropriate for any minors. But I don't know, there, there's a little bit of me is on the 13 to 15 year old side too.
No, no matter, even if, if you, if, I'm not trying to put this in one direction or the other, but if you make the collection or define the collection as primarily 13 to 15, that does not mean a parent can't choose that card for their child if that card, that child is 16 or 17. It, the downside of um expanding this collection all the way up there, but not having them to 17 and not having them have access to the adult collection is how much you might wish to add to the nonfiction adult collection to help support their schoolwork. And stuff that, that we might all object to, you know, having to go read, you know, poems of who knows who or, you know, do a science project or something, but those are not the types of materials that I've heard your, your residents objecting to. So. But again, it's up to you.
One of the things that um I was looking at our publishers suggesting ages. And I looked at the book, the most popular book that we've all talked about recently is identical. And I looked at it and it's like ages, you know, grades nine to 12. You know, well, this policy means that that would be in the adult section. If it were 13 to 15.
Oh, if you went to 13 to 15.
If we went to 13 to 15. If we went to 13 to 17, we've got the same problem. You know, I mean, and, and it's kind of like the, and, and I, I don't know, I mean, I, let me put it this way, before anybody gets really mad at me. I will put ideas out on the table, but I am happy to be shown that they're wrong and then take them off the table as well. Um, but I just, um, I just wanted to say that one of our issues seems to be that we have this young adult collection, which is driving people insane because it addresses themes that are not appropriate for the younger age group, you know, for many people.
Okay, so you could be, your child could be 16, but you can keep them on a 13 to 15 tiered card if you want.
Technically, you could keep them on the 12 card.
Well, that's the thing I was going to ask, right, which is, you know, it, it would be like you, if you had it, your child had the kid card and then, you know, they're 13 and they just, they keep using their kid card. I guess at some point they're like, hey, mom, dad, I, I can't check out, but I want to check out. And then that prompts the parents to like do something about it. But yeah, it's not like their card is going to become deactivated on their birthday.
No. It's, it's also not that you're going to up-level them automatically either. Okay, and we'll get to questions later about when do parents do this and when can parents change it? Um, so thi- this would be mainly options. Well, let me jump ahead. The way we were envisioning this is you're going to pick probably some level of cards. When a family comes in or a parent comes in with a child, staff would explain to them the, the options that they have. Um, the recommendation, although the question is worded open-endedly, the recommendation would be, that's, that our recommendation to you for a variety of reasons would be that the parent opts into one of these cards, not opts out. So you would decide for each of your children what card you wanted them to have. And then you could, as a parent, decide when you wanted that to change. You might have a very percolous, you know, 10 year old who you're comfortable having, have access to the young adult collection. You might have um an older child who, for whatever reason, um, is best suited for, for them to have only access to the children's cards. You as a parent get to choose for each child. It's sort of what we're trying, I think what we're trying to ask you about down the road. So this is one of those areas where I mentioned the type of card and the collections intersect. So this is one of those areas where I mentioned the type of card and the collections intersect. If you have a broader age range in this collection, there may be materials. That. You might not, some parents might not wish their younger children, young adult children to have. If you went all the way up to seventeen. That doesn't mean that you'd leave things like identical there, because you could do it book by book, case by case. If part of the instructions to staff were, you know, to, to not have materials in the young adult collection that were as. Um graphic as perhaps some of them are now.
What impact would? So if we. Implemented this. And all the books are recoded and the catalog is redone. Does, does. I guess I'm struggling with trying to understand, because whatever fix it is that we. Tend. Toward would be lovely if it was a one size fits all, right? And, and then, then that the public is like, yes, you heard us, this is responsive. Thank you. So I guess I'm struggling with. Just how, how other libraries aren't gonna code books this way, right? So could, is that gonna, is that coming?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's nice to have. This does sort of feel, but there's no point in discussing what they can have access to, but we don't know who they are yet. So. What, what is your sort of collective feeling on the thirteen to fifteen or thirteen to seventeen?
So seventeen and above, when it's fifteen and above would be the. Open access in that case. Sixteen? So, so all through fifteen, until you're sixteen, okay. So sixteen above would be all access if the parent chose.
Correct, recognizing that the parent could have chosen for a four year old to have open access.
I'm guessing this would come up somewhere later that uh. When they're filling out a form to get their child to the card, they would know all the.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so one of the things that's not here, because it's not. Policy would be, you know, what are those forms gonna look like? You know, how are, how are you gonna get the staff trained? What kind of materials do you put out for the public so that they understand? Um, I showed the staff yesterday. Let's just say not very well done video, but.
She looked mean. I watched it. She's mean.
But, but this, this, the Abilene Public Library in Texas adopted a children's card. And they had about a two minute video that was up on their YouTube station talking about parents can now come in and get this card. But in all fairness, the library did sort of look like she sucked the lemon when she said this. Awful. The library looked as if she wasn't very happy with this policy, as opposed to saying, you know, we've got this. Wonderful new opportunity for parents to choose. I mean. She made it sound like they had this, but she really didn't think it was a good idea. But, but that's not the issue. You can find the right person to do this if you did it that way. But, but yes, parents would have a choice. And you would make sure that parents knew they had it.
So I'm leaning towards the thirteen to fifteen. Based on what you pointed out, Katie, which is that if we go with the broader range. And then some of the books that people believe are objectionable are then accessible.
Potentially.
Potentially.
I think I'm hearing consensus around thirteen to fifteen, am I?
For now. Well, if you have some objections, I want to hear.
Well, just if, if we did the thirteen to seventeen, would books like identical be taken out and put in the adult section? Does that another question somewhere?
That is a conversation that we had, and Carrie and I have that regularly when books come through, that we still have the option. To look at it and say, and we do this with books, whether it be in juvenile to young adult, then adult to adult. So there's always that option for us to take, and we'll just say identical, to move it to the adult section, so that if you had the thirteen to seventeen card. You wouldn't have access.
Okay. And I think one of the ways that you would publicly be framing this is not that the card is for your thirteen to fifteen year old. But this card, whatever it is, you know, card type two, I'm making that up, is gives you your child access to this collection. For the younger kids and this act, this collection, which is geared for students or children ages thirteen to fifteen. So you, you wouldn't have to say, the kid wouldn't be thinking, mom, sixteen, mom, I should be able to do that. But it's, this is focusing on the collection, but. Adult wouldn't necessarily know to translate ages, so that's sort of what we're looking for here is guidance, but. The materials that were intended for older. Teens would then most likely, well, depending on the topic, it, they would be an adult. Now, that's not to say. I'm gonna make up a book. That there might not be a science fiction novel about, you know, exploration off to another planet and, you know, things happen. And the age range is, and things happen in the sense that, you know, the generator breaks down or who knows what. No sex, it's a clean book. But, but the age range that the publishers put on it is nine to twelve. Because it has more complex vocabulary than if you did the same story with little kids. So it doesn't mean that there might not be books in this collection for whom the target audience was nine to twelve. But the other factors that you mentioned about sexually explicit and topics and things. Wouldn't necessarily fall there just because they were. At age group. That fair?
So what does that want? What does staff thinks a good idea? Don't tell me nothing. We get that.
I think it, I don't think you guys need to, honestly, it's your choice, it's your.
But I don't work with the public on, you know, so I don't know what the impact is gonna be. You know, I don't know. So I, I guess I would like to know that.
The impact of what?
Again, Lizzie.
Pardon? The impact of what?
It of age, of using these, of limiting these cars, you know, of. The impact of making a thirteen to fifteen card or a thirteen to seventeen card. Is there, are there reasons why it would be better to do one or the other?
I mean, I would not advocate making a thirteen to seventeen year old card, because we're not going to solve the problems. That we currently hear a great deal about. I think if you want to make a change, you should focus on a thirteen to fifteen year old card. Or you just have a card that's for ages zero to twelve and then. Let the parents navigate the young adult section. Um, because some libraries just have a. Like one option, they don't have all of these options, because when you have more options. It's harder for parents to understand, it's harder for staff to. Explain at the desk and it gets more complicated.
Yeah, but this community might need it.
So, I mean, this is just reflection and some one parent, which is me. I, I never, with my kids and still, I, I never really let them. Peruse the young adult, because I always just assumed that, I, I mean, to me, the term young adult. Implies they're closer to adulthood than they are children. So, I mean, just trying this out. I mean, and, and I would like Google the books or whatever, you know, if there was. A book in the other section they wanted to check out. And, you know, my sixteen year old still, she's like, mom, this is book okay, and I'll Google it and whatever. So. I mean, if we have a thirteen to fifteen, I get, just, I wouldn't call it young adult, because I, and maybe I'm alone in this belief. I have no idea, but um, you know, I think it's um. I don't know.
If you um would notice the young adult section, for example, that Hayden says teens. It doesn't say young adult, it says teens, it's just got YAM. The one reason that I wouldn't quit could, because. Every single book in that collection would have to have this label on its spine changed.
Right, okay.
You know, so it could be called young adult, you know.
You could call the card if it shows to something different than, and how the item is labeled on its spine. Or how it might appear in, in the catalog.
Right.
I would suggest that changing the labeling of the items and, which would be very labor intensive. It would be not easy, but easier to change the setting in the computer.
Well, we're, you guys are very good at words, and I kind of like kids card, because I think it like flows, you know, you've got that. So teen card doesn't quite roll off the tongue as nicely. There's another, maybe that, yeah, it's right, it's just terminology. Even though it's still categorized young adult, I get it.
And, and, and frankly, whatever card, whatever the card looks like, wouldn't have to say either. I mean. I know a library that recently did something like this, and they held. I'll tell you anyway, since I started that, they, they held a contest. And they had a contest, and then they actually voted on what, for different cards, so that there was some parts that. Like they were drawn by little kids, because they were, um, and there were some that were more. Mature in their, in the sense of their skill. Well, the mine would probably have looked like it was by a three year old, if I had to draw it. But then when the. Person, miner came in to get their card, they got to pick which one they liked. And the, the restrictions were embedded in the. In this computer system, not what it said on the outside. Now, that doesn't mean you want to do that, but it doesn't have to say young adult on the card. You say whatever you want it to say.
I'm a parent, I walk in with a kid, I get somebody carefully explaining to me that I can also choose an unrestricted card.
That is correct, that's the next one on the list.
Yeah. But I didn't mean to jump.
No, no, it's okay. Okay, I would say, yes, you have a choice. I think I've heard thirteen to fifteen.
Yeah.
Rich, what can I ask you? Do you think that that is being responded to this segment of the public that's unhappy?
Uh, it's definitely better, um, but I think. The statute, which we have an exemption for, you know, it says that no, you know, materials are for minors. But, you know, I mean, it would be an improvement. But my personal trether's would be, you know, thirteen to seventeen and, and, or twelve to seventeen. And have no sexually explicit materials at all available for people under eighteen. Unless their parents wanted them to.
I think the other piece, a few other things that are, that are at play here is that if, if you are redefining this. Collection in this card for being for younger children, that's gonna impact. Appropriately what staff puts in that collection going forward. Staff would, I'm sure, undertake a process to make sure. That if there were items in the young adult collection now that sort of fell outside this range, that they were moved to adult. And none of that takes away your existing policy. For um anyone to request reconsideration of any item in case it is in the wrong place. So if, if something doesn't get moved, which shouldn't be moved. They have a way to express either this is in the wrong place or this shouldn't be here altogether. None of this changes that at all. I mean. It's. You know, superseding up. This is. I think what we are trying to do in terms of asking you these questions is this gives. Sort of another tool in the parent's toolbox to help guide their children.
Okay, so and just reading from our current policy. That we passed in November, that says materials for minors under the age of eighteen. That violate Idaho code will be excluded from the juvenile and young adult collection. So if we, we start with a premise, which rightly or wrongly, I mean, you know, we start with the premise that there, that there is an issue. With um the juvenile or young adult collections. I mean, I see this addressing that, because. Any of those books that could potentially. Be accused of being in that, um, you know, code provisions. Not, none of those books are gonna be in thirteen to fifteen, right? Is that, is that how, how I'm understanding this?
Can you say that again?
Well, Lindsay, so I just, I read from our policy, right? Materials for minors under the age of eighteen will be excluded, you know, that violate. The, the code provision will be excluded from juvenile and young adult. So again, the, the materials that people are, have found objectionable, and I guess let me just say. From a sexually explicit standpoint, that doesn't mean that there's not other things that, that people might say are harmful to minors that. Are not of a sexually explicit nature, but if you're, if you're. Creating a new section, it's still young adult, but we're gonna, it's the teen section and it's thirteen to fifteen. Then anything that could have. That would potentially be sexually explicit is no longer gonna be in young adult. That's what I'm saying. And so that's why I think, to, just to your point, Rochelle, I think. The intention would be to, to move it. To be in better conformity with this section of our policy, to the extent that. People believe that we're not in compliance with Idaho code.
That making sense. I, I tend to use a lot of legalese, so apologies.
What you're saying is you don't think that identical should be in the library at all?
Well, probably not, but I mean, that's not that to me. It, it should not be available to. Or, or in a section meant for anyone under the age of eighteen, for, for sure.
Two years short of that.
And, and so this is eliminated, well, this is. This is basically, we're trying to say that if it's a young adult book. Then it's, then it, then we have deemed it suitable for the thirteen to fifteen segment. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
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 By choosing that one.
So, and I know that the parent has the ultimate say of what the kid, where, what level card they have, but. With the policy that she just read, and it says eighteen and under, and then the C option here is open access above. Sixteen. So how does that?
The parent would have the choice.
But, I mean, because of the, the actual statute.
Yeah, and I think I can answer you, Vanessa, it's because that. Those items would be in adult. Our young adult would now be limited to age appropriateness for under fifteen, is what I am hearing. The discussion being.
So if you wanted your kid to not run into any kind of sexually explicit material. You'd not let them get open access until they were eighteen.
Right, because the way it's in our material selection policy is that those items will be excluded from juvenile and young adult. And what we're saying, young adult is now gonna stop at fifteen. Are you with me?
I don't know, I, I thought that you had said that it, it would be taken out. Seventeen and under areas if we went twelve to seventeen.
It could potentially be in the twelve to seventeen area.
Right.
She's saying the opposite.
Unless it.
I mean, first and again, the intent, I mean. Possibly the intent of the one that we passed in November was to remove books and nothing was to including. You know, like identical and tricks and stuff like that, so I guess there's a mistrust issue there.
Well, but, but that, that's exactly, that disconnect that you just indicated, that the public feels is there. That disconnect is exactly what this board is trying to address.
Yeah, that's my question. Is this gonna do that? Is this gonna help, or is there not a way to help that?
Well, I mean, let's just talk about House Bill one three nine for a second, and I did write a four page letter. Over the weekend and sent it off to legislators about it, so I quite feel like I'm pretty well versed on that potential legislation. But um the legislation has a safe harbor for libraries that have taken reasonable steps to restrict access. That's exactly what I feel like this policy is attempting to do, take reasonable steps to restrict access. Again. You know, I understand. What um staff have been saying, and I'm not disagreeing with you, um, just saying the public perception is. That uh, the, the concern on the part of the public is that we do have materials that potentially. Um, are harmful to minors, so those materials, to the extent that they're in the young adult section, will be moved to adults. So that we can make room for young adult being more geared towards thirteen to fifteen.
And, and potentially, there may, and just be potentially caps, caps, caps. There may be items that are in the children's section that apply reflection. By staff or the public belonging young adult, because maybe they're perfectly appropriate for ages thirteen to fifteen, but not for younger children. I mean, it's. this this is this is all such a continuum that trying to pick any point in time on any specific it's easier to talk about a specific title in this case than it is to talk about where might things everything fall. What you're trying to do here, and I think what getting back to your question about what, the first question or second question about why would you have this kind of policy? Is intended, I think, to give parents choices and frankly, some assurance that what's in one area is, for the most part, appropriate for children of this age. For recognizing that not every child's the same.
So but what Rochelle is looking at is a young adult section that is cleaned up of any sexually explicit material. Is that what you're saying? You want a young adult like eighteen, like anything, anybody, anything under eighteen. So is that actually a possibility? Like, who decides what's sexually explicit? I mean, I don't know how to answer that one. When you when a kid can drive themselves to the library, um, but they can only use a middle school card, I I don't know. I don't know.
They still can't smoke or drink or those other things. I mean, it it still seems um appropriate to restrict sexually explicit materials.
But that's why it's important that we restrict the age range to thirteen to fifteen. Because the purpose is to carve out, so to speak, and and try to have the young adult section be more um geared towards younger teenagers. So that that's what we're trying to do. So the more you broaden that, then the more staff is, again, we're here trying to give them policy and guidance so they know what to put on the shelf and in what category. So I just, I'm I'm really struck by the fact that you want it to be thirteen to fifteen. So therefore, anything that is now young adult, you know, has been looked at and said, is this appropriate for not not nine through twelve grade, but thirteen to fifteen?
But she wants everybody protected.
What was he says that those materials won't be in juvenile or young adult? And if we're if we're, am I missing something? I feel like I feel like something's missing because I feel like if it's if it says basically um thirteen to fifteen.
Yep.
And I'll use identical because that's what we're using. And identical is on the adult shelf, which is at this point, if the parent says yes, it's anybody from sixteen and up that gets access to. There's no longer a, the sixteen to eighteen is no longer in one of these categories. So therefore, identical, where would you shelve it?
An adult.
But isn't that where the sixteen to eighteen's go now? If they don't have their own little.
Their parents.
I think I'm saying if they have access to everything, you can't go by this um code.
The parent can limit a kid up to eighteen to.
Then we go back to um up to sixteen isn't maybe good enough for an eighteen year old. I don't know, I'm trying to I'm trying to stick by the code more than more than us doing these ages. Because that is what really is the important part. If if identical um is deemed that has been the adult section, you take it out of the youth section, but it's in the adult, but now the sixteen year olds have access to it.
Not if their parents limit them.
Yeah, but then they're limited to age sixteen. So I I does that make sense? It's that seems kind of weird.
I've got to talk down with a question to staff. Right now, the, I think, the young adult nonfiction collection is fairly small. And from what I saw, seems to be non-school related, just sort of things that teens might be interested in. Whatever they are. If if you put this policy even if even at fifteen, but if put it up to seventeen, and they are limited to that, it's not just the identical type titles, which I think have their own issue, but it's how large you're going to have to make the young adult nonfiction collection to let it is broad enough to allow children who are, excuse me, young adults, minors, pick an age, who are here doing schoolwork to be able to access the materials they need legitimately to do, whether it be their science project or their history project or something else. Am I missing something here?
No, it's going to be a lot of evaluation for what has to move and what has to be added.
And so if you were, for example, to move if you, let's just pick history. A lot of people read history because they choose to. A lot of people read stuff on the French and Indian world because they have. Um, if it gets moved to impact the school assignment, then it's not visually available to adults. They could always go into that collection to get it if that were shelved. But it wouldn't be there where they would typically find it, whether they be biographies or sciences. Is that correct? All I'm saying is, don't only think about fiction titles, don't only think about sexual titles. Think about what has to happen to a collection if you're going to limit a very broad group of your school age students potentially to this section if their parents choose.
Well, I'm almost thinking we need to put a waiver on our, you know, when you fill out you want a library card. I mean, if it, well, their parent opts in, they should get a waiver. The parent opts out, you get a waiver, assuming that the onus is on the library to take reasonable steps to protect those under eighteen.
I can't say to have done a comprehensive study of this, but I do believe that having the potential for two cards like this for minors is atypical in libraries. Um, even having a card for for children that relates to twelve and under or whatever for children's action is atypical. Um, the open access, for the most part professionally, is the norm. So a case could be made, if you go with whatever category you pick, that you are taking more um precautions, steps, opportunities for parents to be actively engaged in determining what their children should have access to than most libraries do. Lindsay would.
I agree, yeah.
So um I would also say that no matter what you pick, it's not going to be perfect. Um, but I think from what I heard from staff yesterday is that whatever you pick, they're going to do their best to implement it, recognizing that that if things end up sort of not in the right place, then they'll be responsive to what they hear from their colleagues and what they hear from the public.
Okay, so I have a question for you, Rochelle. If we have a thirteen to fifteen card, and again, it just says it's geared toward, it doesn't, it's not. And and you have um a household that doesn't want their child to have any material or have access to any material that could potentially contain content that could be objectionable. Why wouldn't that family go with the thirteen to fifteen card? So how, I guess I just really want to understand how you think we're not protecting um all of those individuals who are under eighteen, because again, it's about empowering the parent and the family to select the appropriate card.
Um, well, I guess I'm stressful because it was happened since November, um, the books weren't removed. And if someone had like a sixteen or or seventeen year old child, didn't want them exposed to sexually explicit materials, but didn't necessarily want to limit them to only stuff that's, you know, with fifteen year old characters or younger. Yeah, they would be interesting in reading about people their own age and the things that they're going through, you know, preparing for college or or whatever, and probably aren't going to get a whole lot of that in books aimed at thirteen to fifteen year olds. I just think that we should protect all minors. That stuff shouldn't be in any of the minor sections. Um, but, you know, like I said earlier, I I would live with thirteen to fifteen year old categorization as well, it's just that I think that the other one is superior.
You think thirteen to seventeen is superior?
Thirteen to seventeen. Making sure there's not one item that's sexually explicit.
Uh, we're making a good faith effort, make sure that there's not, and you know, just being responsive if someone challenged a book.
Are you indicating we aren't being responsive? I'm just curious.
Um, well, yeah, no books have been removed and we still have books that are sexually sexually explicit, like that all the Lynn Hopkins. Um, if any of those.
Those are new new requests for regeneration.
We're still working on the ones that were received in January, so there hasn't been a determination.
Prior to that, I mean, it just seems like, okay, we knew there was a problem. We enacted a new policy saying that we were going um to not knowingly have anything that didn't comply. And nothing was moved. I mean, it just seems like if there's a policy, it's the job and and duty of the people who work in the library to, you know, take out the most obvious ones and you know, on their own without having to go to a court of law and be proven. And it just seems like that would have been responsive, but we weren't.
What, and this is only me speaking as me, uh, but what I think what I would recommend happens is that once you adopt this policy, whatever it is, that you as board, um, give instruction to staff to develop an implementation plan uh with target dates or getting things done. Um, and to regularly report to you, the board, every month on the progress that they'll be making. When when we get to the next section, the royal we will be explaining to you some of the challenges on the technology side, um, which can be done, but can't be done like overnight. Um, same thing with moving items out of the collection. But um, again, having met with staff yesterday, it was certainly mine. I have no doubt that that they are ready to implement the policy that you um adopt. And but they also would want you to understand that it's going to take a little bit of time now. I'm going to speak for Karen, she's probably capable of speaking for herself. Um, uh, but i- if the young adult collection became thirteen to fifteen, she's got a pretty good idea of what are the primary authors and titles that might be questioned in the young adult section. So if she was going to start looking at things, she probably wouldn't start at A and work her way through Z. She would start with the titles that are authors that were either identified or she thought might be problematic. I mean, I know you're very logical, but it would seem like you would want to deal, you would want to deal with the biggest parts first, you know? And and it obviously she wouldn't be the only one involved, but it would be the staff that that would be engaged. So, but.
Can I ask a question um of of all you guys? And that is, um, we would probably house in a third, say if you had a thirteen to fifteen section, we'd probably house those books that public that publishers deem are that age in that section. Is that what, is that how would would be? Yeah, is that roughly how it goes? And do those books tend to be less sexually explicit than?
They can be. But we also noticed that the book, let's say if you have that thirteen to fifteen section, and the book says that it's for like twelve to sixteen, we would air up rather than put it in the thirteen to fifteen potential content. I mean, because then, yeah, generally, our policy is to air up if we have concerns about.
Okay, so air up, meaning it would just head head to the adult section?
Yeah.
If that's identified within the record from the publisher.
And or if somebody called it to your attention, you looked at it.
I wish there were an easy answer to that.
It's not really easy, it's just with me having the conversation and.
Oh, wouldn't that be a shame?
And frankly, there would be one answer for everybody, because this really does need to be community by community, library by library. And and so.
Okay, so I'm thinking about books that are not sexually explicit about kids going off to college and they're in a, how 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 do young adults get a hold of those books? How do they know about them? How would we, how would we let them know?
Typically a thirteen to fifteen year old who's thinking about going off to college already?
I was, no, I was thinking of the, I was thinking about what Rochelle was talking about. She wants all tween books in a sec, you know, for for uh eight, under eighteen, all tween books. I'm just saying. There will, there are probably books that are headed, that are there are probably books that are more geared toward uh older teenagers, but they'll be in the adult section because, you know, but they won't be books that are really causing a problem. They won't be sexually explicit books or whatever. And so I was just wondering if those.
Well, this is what, this is the problem legislators deal with all the time. Every law is either a bit under inclusive or over inclusive, that you can't, you can't escape it.
Oh, okay, that's good. I mean, thank you for clarifying that. Because you can't, so you cannot make a perfect law. There's no perfect anything.
Right.
Okay.
You just have to draw a distinction for your best.
So our best, our best bet at being able to have parents feel comfortable about non-sexually explicit material is like a thirteen to fifteen.
Possibility.
You know, you put it to thirteen to seventeen and you're going to start including the books like identical in it. You know, is that right?
Maybe, there might be something that's more explicit than parent might like, but not at that
Oh, not at that extreme. Okay, yeah, right, right, that for me is.
Well, so if we pass.
Kissing off the table.
If we pass a policy that thirteen to seventeen, what changes, if any, would staff visualize making to the young adult collection? Is that a good question?
Yes.
Because you're you're making some assumptions that maybe we ought not make.
Like to the point when we talk about the books Rochelle, you mentioned, that are those, we have the policy, yes, but there's not the procedure isn't such, like when we see some of these titles like identical, it goes through the request for reconsideration. And we have not sat down with Lindsay, Carrie and I to say, okay, where do do these books go? Right? And what levels? Because there's various levels of, you know, what you're saying, that that extreme content versus what you just mentioned.
Kissing.
You know, so what does that really look like for us on the ground, making that decision?
Yeah.
Moving forward. Um, so it 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 is going to take time and there's lots of books and I know I've been pulling them to review them and there's only so many I can read every night when I go home. So.
I just, I wanted to say one thing, like, the way our library operates is, and this is how most public libraries operate. We get copy catalog records from our vendors, which means there are these records that are created with all the data about the book and the cataloging subjects and all of that. We download that and we trust that that is a good record and that will indicate where we should be shelving something. And this allows us to be efficient and use our time wisely. And what you're asking us to do, which is fine, is that we will be doing more evaluative evaluative, what I call original cataloging, where we will not be following the prescribed copy catalog record. And so by asking us to do that, it requires more time, more attention to detail, more evaluation, more research for each item. And so this is a a shift in how we process material. It is doable, but it is not something, and it's subjective, because we have to create very specific guidelines that if you see, you know, X number pages with kissing, then it goes over to adult. Do you see what I mean? Like, it's not as, it's not simple and we're moving away from copy cataloging for some of these items.
I understand that, and that is because this this community is, this library system is under crisis.
I know, and I'm I'm not denying that, I just want to explain the behind the scenes that staff will be doing.
Yeah. Um, and I, and I I I, there was no question in my mind that I wanted to by the end of this, absolutely make this board very aware of how time consuming this job, this is going, whatever policy we put in place, it's going to be time consuming for staff. It's going to be phenomenal, and that. Going, whatever policy we put in place, it's gonna be time consuming for staff. It's gonna be phenomenal. And the fact that they're sitting here, the fact that they worked on it yesterday is phenomenal. It is phenomenal. I am incredibly grateful. I just don't know how to make the library super clean for. You know. Eight, under eighteen, I don't know how to do that. I don't know what super clean is.
No, it's like I'm wishing we had, I just, I I Googled it. What is the MPAA stand for? You know, the Motion Picture Association of America? It's very objective, right? However many curse words there are, there's like a. I didn't really have that.
In the interest of moving forward. I would suggest that that for the moment, we leave thirteen to fifteen. Move through the other questions, recognizing that you can go back to any other piece of this. And what's gonna happen at the end of this session, I think. Um, is that I will draft something for you to review, and you as a board will have a chance to look at it and discuss it again.
And and this would be for March, March, March is meeting, so you, and and we gotta be out of this room by five thirty.
So, is that, you comfortable with that? Okay, so.
It would have been excellent, I don't know, in nitrogen.
Yeah, but let's.
Okay, so. Part two, number four establishes that you would have cards. Named whatever you wanna name them, targeting these age groups. So then, if I had that card, if I had that children's card for ages for children and other, what could I do with it? Okay, so in some cases, I'm gonna take away the question marks. It would mean that they could borrow books in the children's section. And you wouldn't be distinguishing between whether they could borrow a picture book or a juvenile fiction book or a juvenile nonfiction book. J book, they would have access to it. They would also have access to the media that's categorized as juvenile. So there's some. Some DVDs there, there, there's some music, there's a few other little things, but they've all, they're already in that collection as juvenile. And that's it. That's what they would get. What they can't do or couldn't do, in part because of the technical design, again, jumping guys. Is right now you you subscribe to a service, um, ebooks, you have, you have Libby and you have other things. Right now, it's not possible to have a children's card, say, you can only get the children's books over here. It's either all or nothing, the way the product is set up. The same thing is true for the licensed databases that are on your system that require a library card to validate. You know, you've got some. Business stuff, you've got health stuff, you've got other things, you know. Vendor can't separate it. Now, again. With an adult card or an open access card, they could, for their parents could access it for them. They would not be able to. I'm gonna need help here. I, I, but I ain't gonna try, those are my moments trying. You can try it all day, but here.
Okay, so due to the way that we would have to recatalog, um, these items. And I can go into a long technical discussion. We would have to reclassify these, um, as item types. That only this type of card could access. So we would have to create new additional item types in the system and move our juvenile collection. And why collection possibly over to that and then allow only access to those. Other libraries in the CIN consortium will not be doing this because they. So materials that they have in their juvenile collection. Will not be cataloged in a way that these restricted cards can request and check out from our libraries.
Okay, so our juvenile card could not, would not allow. A child to check out any other item from CIN from another library.
If the item was, i- if they wanted to have the item sent over here. Uh, for instance, a place to hold on at first from, say, Portland or Liberty Lake, which in this location are gonna be the two most common non-district libraries. Um, that item could not be checked out because it would not be cataloged in a way that we.
Okay, so they could order it. They could order it.
We, we haven't tested this because we haven't set up any scenarios to test this. We think. It could probably be requested, but when it got here, it couldn't be checked out. That's something we would have to do. That's just moving on to say, I'm not sure exactly how that would look. Um, once again, not having set up this type of scenario in the system, we're speaking from, this is what we think the behavior of the system will do. Uh, once again, because other libraries that are not district libraries, once again, will not be recataloging their materials necessarily in this manner. Um, the way that the system is set up, this card, if they went to Cordillane, they could check out from Cordillane. Or Liberty Lake or any other non-district library, because they're not setting these policies up for their libraries.
Yeah. So, okay, so I think that would please.
But we are setting these policies up for our district libraries. And once again, because they are not cataloging their materials in that manner, it can't be sent over from Cordillane and checked out here, but they could go over there and check it out. So, that is our, with about ninety percent confidence, what we think the system would do if we. Implement this. Once again, speaking as not having actually tested this.
People who want, it seems to me that people who want their kids limited would be thrilled to know that they couldn't check out from another.
They couldn't request from another one. And 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 that's kind of a thing, you know, once again, we kind of want. As best we can, open access, but yeah, that 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 would be, that 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 would be a side effect, even if it was a juvenile level book.
But they can, but other libraries will continue to be able to check out from us.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
And and if, if the item was owned by another library and the parent wanted it for some reason. The parent could get a card and the parent could check.
They can check it out on their card, yeah. That that kind of goes back to the very first question, you know. In a scenario like this, it's almost really advantageous for the parent to have a card, because if there is an edge case like this. That the, the parent can use their card, that's their provision, but yes, I, this is certainly appropriate for.
And and especially potentially for those items that you don't own at all, but. Those ones that child to have access to, but that's the way to get it, it's gonna be on the parent's or an adult or an open access card.
Then a restricted card here could check out anything over in Portland.
Correct, because they are are not going to be set. I mean, this is our setup.
Right, okay.
Good news, of course, is the twelve year old and the fifteen year other is gonna get there by themselves. So, and then they also then wouldn't be borrowing interlibrary loan for people who aren't even in your network. Let me just get a real quick rundown of what three licensed databases are that that. No longer they would, they would not have access to.
Uh, we've got quite a few, the things that we license through Ebsco and, um, our, um. What's our main?
There's there's financial things, there's there's.
Um, there, there, there's quite a bit. If you go to the databases, uh, section of our website, you'll get a pretty comprehensive list. I don't. The Lily databases, yeah, I don't have a offhand list of, there's quite a few. Right, but once again, there may be material in that, this is, here's, here's the difficulty there is that, once you're ready, you're in. So there may be materials in there that we don't want a minor restricted card to have access to. So we just kind of have to say no, if we're going to.
And and it's the, the vendor is requiring library card to validate, because they don't want you letting in people from all over the country, so they can't sell the database. That library over there.
Yeah, do you see any of those databases changing? Has it, changing?
Uh, that I have not ever read anything to.
Um, there may be a feature for for our overdrive regal ebooks. Um, at some point, they may develop a feature where you can, uh, break out and, uh, but to my knowledge, that doesn't exist right now. If they ever do break that down, that would certainly be something we would pursue, potentially.
We just wanted you to be aware that this is, this is not a choice that you have the option to make, because right now it's not possible. And if parents thought it was important for their minor child to have access to some of these things, then they need to eat. To go to an open access card, either for the child or have an adult open access family card that they could use when necessary. Okay, moving on, so for your. Young adult card or whatever you're gonna call it, they would have access, basically, well, they'd have access to everything that was in the juvenile area that was. Useful, or I mean, available to them, and they would have the young adult books and. Young adult media, which you don't really have all that much stuff classified there. Okay, and then the same restrictions apply for the same reason. Open access, uh, for borrowers of any age, regard, uh, unless the parent or legal guardian selects a different card type. We'd get access to anything you own, they get access to the digital resources that require a card. They could borrow from CIN libraries, have things sent here and check them out, and they would could use your internal library loan borrowing from. Elsewhere in the country if necessary, or sorry. Moving on. So, um, how and when can a parent or legal guardian select the type of library card they wish their minor child to have? We envision that, that when they came in for a, never had a card, new card. That they would, that staff would explain the options very clearly, non-judgmentally, the parent would choose. And that kind of card that the minor child would get. Okay, so that's for the people who don't have a card now. Question number seven is that, once this is implemented. We would suggest that you let parents know that this is available, uh, and then that they could. They could change their child's card two different ways. One. That they came in and wanted to do it now. And or when the child's card expires, which e- everybody's card expires in every two years. So that they would have a chance at that point to re-up. Either the open access card or a limitation card with, out of knowing perhaps before that they could have done it sooner. So they, they, they don't have to wait, they can do it whenever they want, but if every, every two years. At least, they would have another option to make a decision. And then. I would assume, although we didn't put it here, that that eighteen, um. It would become an open access card because they're no longer a minor. Does, do those make sense to you that we're trying to, we're trying to provide as many options as possible for parents to do this? And not have to wait for. For the two years or whatever. Once it's ready to go, anyone wants to come in, could, could make that happen. Okay. Um. Next question is about linking, um, adult or legal writing card to their. Check cards of their minor child or children, you do that already. Um, somebody want to explain for, to them, just so they know what that means right now?
So, what that means is when, if, if a parent has a library card of their own and they said, and they sign up their, uh, child or children. Um, yeah, the accounts can be linked so that the parent, uh, the checkouts that the, uh, child has on their card. Uh, can show up on, under their account as well, so they can see what their children have. Checked out without explicitly going in, scanning each of their child's cards, they're linked. I believe they can also see, um, any, um. Lost item placements or any other costs that may be associated with those, uh, with those accounts. Um, so, and 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 once again, on, when you have the child's card pulled up as a staff person. You can easily look back, see who the parent is, click over, get to the parent's account, and it's tied together that way, do you want it? That's basically what it is, yeah, um, it just allows the parent in a one-stop shop to kind of. And you as a staff person as well, when you're checking out to the parent, you can see, oh, your, your children have fourteen items, seven of them are overdue.
Because there's a matter of the backseat of the car.
Yeah.
So, so this would not be any change, but again, since you want the policy to be clear to the public. You would, in the policy statement that you, for policy that you adopt, you make clear that that's the case, so. You wouldn't take for granted that they already knew. And then the last question we were posing was whether or not, um, an adult could apply for their own card. And or for their minor child online, or do they have to come in, so.
The answer to that is hybrid, yes, yes and yes. Um, they can apply online and yes, they have to come in. We have a form, um, that our, our, um, our circulation software system does have a place. When they go and they search our catalog, uh, where they can go and they can sign up for a library card if they do not already have one. It will ask for basic information like their name, their address, uh, their phone number, their email address, um. What it'll do is it will issue them just within the system of very. Temp- temporary type card, it's not even a full type card. What it really does is if they, let's say, just move to the area and I'm looking into catalog and I see a book I really want. And I wanna place a hold on it, but I don't have a library card yet. I can sign up online, I can place that hold, which is the only thing you can really do with that card. You place the hold and then you come into the library with your photo ID, with your proof of residency. And that's when we finish filling you out on the staff side, can't do the library card, and say, welcome to North Idaho, we're glad you're here.
And go get the.
Take up your whole, now, most people probably haven't placed the hold, but you know, then what that does is it allows them to get the information in. Um, they've entered it, so you, as a staff person, you don't have to redo all that work, so as a staff person, it's nice. They just come in, they confirm their identity, you say, yes, yes, you do a couple additional things, finish out the card, you hand it to them. So that would, that is the process as it currently stands for both a parent and a child. A parent can fill out that form. Once for each of their child's children, um, and then get those cards when they come in as well, that. If we, if we adopt this, um, that would also be one of the staff person, say, here's our different type of minor cards, full access or. These levels of restrictions, whatever we decide.
Okay, but would I be right in assuming that if. If your teen had a teenager card, then they wouldn't be able to check out, say, biographies? Or books about gardening, or books about recipes? You know, the, the whole other entirety of the library, it is, is not available.
That, that's why I was saying, is that if you really wanted to have a large, if you wanted to do it in thirteen to seventeen. You would have, I think, any. Dramatically expand the nonfiction young adult collection to be able to, at the very least, meet their school needs, but all those other topics.
So is this, given the issues that we all talked about at the beginning of the meeting? And is this what? What staff and our consultant believe is what we should do? Um, I mean, is this, is this the responsive path, or are there other options available to us to consider?
Your consultant doesn't have an opinion, the consultant is going to express on whether or not this is something that that you should do. Um, I think that's a decision that you have to make, well. Um.
There are other things we should be looking at.
Um, yeah, heading there, um. That's why I asked you to start with what were the list of concerns. Um, I'm not aware of other things that would get you as close to addressing these concerns. That, a- as this, I hope, would get you, recognizing that. Library card option and adjusting the scope of the young adult collection are good steps in that direction. But at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to judgment on specific titles where reasonable people can disagree.
Well, and that's where this, this whole controversy. Is, is difficult to really pin down, because, I mean, as a library user myself, there are a ton of just. Amazing material in the adult section. And so even though I said that my kids don't really frequent the young adult section, they absolutely check out books from the adult section. I mean, you know, if you want a dog about a, or a dog, if you want a book about a dog, you gotta go to the adult section. I mean, if you want a good book about a dog. I mean, if you want a children's book about a dog, then just go, um, I mean, part of me, part of me, I guess, I, I, I wish we had. Um, some statistical analysis or some study, cause I mean, we can do a whole host of work to create this. And then have a very, very small percentage of the public that actually utilizes the thirteen to fifteen teenager.
What a, a- and part of my response to that would be that when, um. When we as, as librarians, and I'll take to myself personally in that regard. Um, say that it's, um, a parent's responsibility to guide the reading of a young child. And we don't give parents some tools that they could use, um, to do that. Um, we're not being very helpful, um, because just as. Even staffed up with the content of every title, and, you know, I. Think this, what you're talking about here is. Perhaps a, uh, much more of a good faith effort than I've seen many, many places make. That might not, you know, is perfect. Um, plus, I would suggest that, again, you you've asked the staff as well, so I certainly want them to chime in. Remember that just because you adopt the policy once, doesn't mean you can't tweak it and fix it, if you find that there are things that just. Remember that just because you adopt a policy once, doesn't mean you can't tweak it and fix it if you find that there are things that just don't work. But um and as as Rochelle said early on, when we talked about the cards, I would certainly, if I were at the circulation desk or your library director and you were explaining this to to uh parents, I would encourage them to get a card themselves so that when they do want though, because they've gotten a new puppy or, you know, it's gotten an interest in butterflies or beetles, or they're going to go visit grandma and they want to travel book on Kansas. You know, um, you know, that they they can get it and so that they're not as restricted. Because most of these kids are probably not coming here by themselves.
Yeah, and I mean, I've found frankly, I probably utilize the nonfiction section of the library more than any other. But I'm probably an oddity in that regard. I don't know. But I mean, I think our nonfiction uh collection is extremely robust and I just always find it fascinating. Oh, yeah, I absolutely want to read about whatever it is. I mean, anyway.
So I mean, you ask, you ask consultant to staff, so staff. Or do you disagree with me with it? I forget to say.
Then then goes to come back carry to you at this point where you're choosing which books to buy way back in the beginning. We get into the library.
Yeah, and we follow our selection policy, you know, so there is criteria set in there. We look at review sources, we look at our vendors, we look at our member requests, our staff selections. So there's a lot of process that already goes into, you know, purchasing those materials and we will continue to do that, but we will have to reevaluate individual titles differently going forward, depending on the policy that is adopted. And so we'll have to come up with new procedures and new methods for doing.
The thing when I was reading it was material selection. And, you know, it was within the website that the library will never have sexually explicit stuff. There was some generalized wording like that. And so now we go down to, well, who gets to choose what's sexually explicit? But we've all searched, we can either some areas that we probably can pay better attention to. And so.
And that's where our request for reconsiderations, you know, come in as well. If we're asked to review something, we absolutely will.
What does that mean? We've already owned it before you come and question?
That, yeah, that part is, but we don't know, you know, the content of every book before it's purchased. It doesn't.
I don't know what you've read about it.
It, yes, and if the reviews say that it's sexually explicit, then that's something we know. But if it doesn't, and most reviews don't determine what is sexually explicit.
And and also, I mean, that the whole burden is not on you, you know, as
No, that's right.
Titles come into the collection, you know, other staff are seeing them. I mean, if if staffs think that that something is in the wrong place, they also have the opportunity and I would say, yes, obligation to raise it is an issue. You probably meet regularly with your services people and, you know, so there's.
Yes, and you meet with our managers and, you know, there's lots of staff involved and there's lots of discussions behind the scenes about the collection and where it goes and how we evaluate it. So we'll continue to do those things as well.
Yeah, I actually did want to add something to the first question before we got on this was pedophilia and incest for minors.
Ah, oh, okay.
Your very first.
What was your first?
Pedophilia and incest.
It was, it was before we started this stage.
No, it was what were the terms of the community? Thank you. Or there are other, these were the questions that that came to mind for me when I was trying to help you think through this issue. Were there other things that, and I already asked this to the staff, were there other things that um that you that you think need to be here that you didn't get to say in response to one of these questions? They weren't meant to be limiting. They were meant to spark discussion. And I I hope you see how this kind of question format can perhaps help you understand an issue in a way that if you just kind of go, well, should we have a card for kids?
Right, right. This is, yeah, and because the question was, if I remember, what we hear from the public, not what we're thinking ourselves, right?
Well, you can think too.
Something else that we hear from the public.
Oh, please, okay.
They some would include books for children with two same parents.
Okay.
We hear it. Mostly.
Yeah, that was the L B G T Q thing that that Katie mentioned without that without.
Yeah, well, I think of that as different because that I think of as the big thing that's going on right now. I'm thinking about just um little Sally with two moms.
Okay.
That's L B G T Q.
It is, but it's
It's a difference.
If there is a difference, okay, there is a difference.
What does plus mean?
Now, I mentioned pedophilia.
I got it.
Intestine.
Yep. Now. My purpose in asking you that was to sort of help you think through these questions that we do here. When I'm drafting the policy, I'm not, I don't intend to write you a paragraph about what you're trying to address here. This meant that you all heard them, you know, you've heard, so I'm not making a report back on that. If you've got minutes of sessions of things if you if you need it, right?
That, so in other words, these concerns are not going to be part of the policy. Is that what you're trying to say?
Naming them.
I don't intend to write a policy statement that target. This this is the context of the why you're doing this. And one of the whys back into your first question is so that parents have.
I understand that. I just want to make sure that everybody else did.
Well, there's, you you will have the minutes. I'm just saying, I'm not writing a document.
And I want to come back to a question on pedophilia and incest, for instance. If our policy said we're not going to have any books that are illegal or condoning illegal behavior, are we backing the law coverage of pedophilia, I assume, is illegal and incest is illegal?
Name the kids because that would be illegal and then that's happening to them and then.
So I see what we're trying to do is have materials that help people discover, name or discover what's happening versus advocating for it. Maybe that's one of.
I think some of the books that people are very concerned about are actually trying to do that. And that's main, main the issue and describe the issue. And not necessarily promote the issue, yeah, advocating issue. And um so that that's a difficulty.
Uh huh.
And that's a difficulty.
Because when it's out of context, it sounds pretty salacious. But if it's helping somebody understand what's happening.
I was putting it together with as an older adult, I've been getting lots and lots more scam site type stuff, you know, lots more. And the reason that I can identify that it's scam is because of all of the articles and all of the articles with examples of exactly what I might see or what I might, you know? And I was thinking that is helping me so much to not panic when I get, I just got another one the other day, not panic when I get it, um, because I understand because of stuff I've read, what is happening to me. And I look, I thought about that in terms of kids with sexuality today. And I think of it particularly with young women walking into situations that they don't expect and they don't know anything about them. You know, and they, you know, they, and and I think some of these books are trying to identify that. So I don't think they're all evil, but I think they think that they're pretty sexually explicit, especially if you read passages.
And then the other statistic is what, by the age of twelve, seventy-two percent of all kids have phones that have access to the internet? So they're accessing stuff anyway. But that we can't control this if we're trying to put side guards, what we're railed on to narrow down and still provide accurate information. Which to me is the magical library, accurate information. Internet is.
Put everything on the internet as such, then.
Depends if I like it or not.
So June, have you identified any systems in the country that have the, like a teenager card?
Yes.
There, there are some.
Other word. Oh, a teenager card.
Yes.
Yes, we, I showed the staff an example yesterday and our, all of our collective eyes glazed over. They had four categories of cards.
Uh huh.
That could be, yeah, that could be used um for by minor children where the most restricted was basically the items only in the children's collection. The least restricted was that the minor child could have access to everything except our rated videos and and something else without parental permission.
So they're, but they're rated R, so we know what it is right from the start.
Yeah, now whether or not, how that record gets pulled up or how they do it, I don't know. But then there were two other levels of 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 um distinctions between them. And again, jump in if I'm misstating it, but we all were kind of saying, just imagine trying to explain that number of choices to parents in a way that they could make an informed decision. So
We were useful.
We were moving more to something that was fewer categories, recognizing that the system is perfect. In some of the issues that are the other other examples I found were for the most part um cards for children twelve and under. Uh, they they didn't touch the young adult issue. But again, when we were discussing it yesterday and and what I heard from your board sessions was that there was concern about, serious concern about the items that are in the young adult collection. And so having a child only card might not meet your needs. So that's why we're all bringing you two different ways to talk or think about this, or actually three, depending on the age of the young adult.
Uh, yeah, and I guess, you know, I'm really, I'm really struggling over here because it is, it it does really truncate the access to material. But at the end of the day, it's not the library imposing that barrier. It would be the parent's choice.
And and parenting. And I guess the two primary options that a parent would have at that case would either be to take the restricted card, recognizing that for some topics or many topics, they would need to borrow for the child because things from the adult section. Yeah, the dog book. Or opt for the open access card. And then, to the extent possible, be looking at those items that child has, my child has brought home to see if 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 it was what they were looking for, recognizing that the title of the book is not always helpful. Even the jacket flap isn't necessarily always helpful.
The reviewers. Even the reviewers, then, what they say.
Right, so so it's.
Also reminding um families that they have other, they have other tools as well. That they can link their child, they can link their card that their adult card to their children's card, children's card, so that they can see what their um seventeen and under, yeah, under seventeens or under eighteens are checking out.
Yeah.
Katie, can I, Vanessa, can you clarify your comment about the same-sex parents versus the L G B T Q? Like, what?
You know, it's not necessarily one that I have in my own brain. I just think that some people that speak at the public forum that they, that they might have in their minds that it's different.
Okay.
Like, um, for instance, same-sex marriage or parents, it's been out for quite a long time, you know? So I think, lack of better term, some people might be kind of like, you know, kind of used to that. And so the L G B T Q I plus that you mentioned
Yeah, yeah.
I think is more like new to a lot of people. That that's what I mean. And I kind of forgot that she had said that for the first for the first uh question, but I thought about, because they, there's been several people that talk about uh children's books that have same-sex parents. So um again, I'm just thinking maybe that's why some people think of it differently.
Because the content usually for those books, like with the same-sex parents in the juvenile collection as well as in the young adult collection, is not explicit content versus some of the characters in the young adult collection that are L G B T Q or heterosexual does have what would be considered that explicit explicit content. So I just wanted to see
Right.
anything you would specifically heard to help.
No. And maybe, maybe these people talking, maybe they've actually read the different or looked at the different books themselves or something. But I just get a different feel from when somebody brings us just that, yeah, yeah. And again, it might be because it's um been in, you know, it's been out for so long now that um that people see this other as newer and, you know, like, it's in the media all the time and.
Would it, would it be fair to say that for the children's books, the fact that the book fiction um had same-sex parents in it would be fairly obvious either in the title or the description of on the jacket flap. I mean, is it going to be a surprise?
If we're talking easy fiction, my hope is that it wouldn't be a surprise. I'm trying, I'm just trying. Yeah, obviously, yeah, that. And versus shade fiction, when you're reading along, they could find, and then all of a sudden Sufi goes to Julie's house and two moms are there.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't be anywhere in the
Yeah.
the record.
Yeah.
Also, that's not necessarily explicit content. Two moms that his parents are divorced and now stepmom and mom, you know, I mean, so it starts to get into. So that's just why I was asking specifically if there was something, someone had said that.
Because we've also had people come to public college and say those books are important to them, that they need them, and that they've been using them until that's that balance where we need to have everybody mad at us, so we can can address or have available.
And and that. Uh, I'm just, you know, the parents, if they, you know, think that that would be helpful to their child, the parent can get those books. It doesn't have to be in the child's section where, you know, children from families who wouldn't want them to have that would unexpectedly come across something like that.
If and when you do this and you have this sort of um public awareness, I hate to call it a campaign, but, you know, when you're explaining to the community what you're doing and why, I I really think it's important that you emphasize that you have really talented staff in your facilities that can help parents and kids find items of interest to them. And in the same way that if there were topics that parents, you know, with books that don't have that, whatever it is. Um, I mean, for example, my kids when they were little, I just, they didn't want anything that was really super, were scary. Um, and so, you know, you couldn't necessarily tell that. So that, you know, the children's libraries were great at helping them find good things that weren't scary. So the staff is there as a resource and and I would hope people would be strongly encouraged to ask this.
I I'm going to make a comment. So I this is a personal comment, but it's okay for the record.
You're lying on.
So I I I'm really proud of this because I remember the day I signed for my first bar, my first library card when I was six years old, six years old. Had a public library card since I was six years old. You had to sign your name. And I had to be able to sign your name. And um, but my name had changed because I had just recently, in a blended family, gotten adopted and it was a really complicated new last name and I was like, and I really wanted the card. Anyway, I am, I was never restricted. And I was able to go to, this is a very different time and age and I rode by bike, where you could ride your bike and I went to the library all the time by myself. Um, never restricted. Remember, I remember when I started getting bored with the kids section and was able to move. Nobody ever stopped me. Nobody talked to me. Nobody did anything. It makes me sad to um be having to hassle this out, particularly with people who have grown up in libraries because having grown up in as a library customer for forever, it makes me really sad. And I guess I just wanted to express that. I also have a really challenging time. We got a letter from a patron who's very upset because her ten-year-old um has, could, can check out um, is it beyond agenda? And her ten-year-old can also order from Corlaine Public Library uh gender queer. And I think in a million years, I would have known if my children were doing that and would have understood that. So I don't, some parts of me, I just. in a million years, I would have known if my children were doing that and would have understood that. So I don't, some parts of me, I just I, we can't clean up the world for everybody and I don't think that, I don't think we can. And there are books out there that you would not want your children to read and I very much want my children to read. And what I want is for it to be okay on both ends. But that's what I want, it for it to be okay on both ends. But I want my kids to have access to some of those books that you don't want your kids to ever see. So I think that if we can understand that we have a world like that, it would be a lot better. You guys have put in a tremendous amount of work and and have been insanely helpful for this board and I cannot thank you enough. So that's all I have to say. Do we need other things? We need to direct Jude to write us a policy?
I can absolutely do that.
I don't need a motion.
No, obviously. But it's not an action item other than it will become an action item because you are now, respond to our request to develop a policy and bring it back to us for review.
I will be developing a policy that will be brought back to you for review.
Yeah.
And not that I will be bringing it back to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Physically, she doesn't live here. We didn't, no. And we didn't, we can't ever remember that because she's always here. But anyway, it will be an action item on March's agenda. How's that? And we don't have to vote on it if we're not ready, but it's something, a policy that we could vote on in in March. If is that, is that seen reasonable? Am I jumping the gun of any?
No, I will have something for you that you can consider.
Okay.
I I would also remind you that the all group, all the group editing is painful. If if the document is drafted, doesn't meet all of your needs, there's nothing to prevent you from suggesting, you know, this needs to be added or that needs to be subtracted or this needs to be clarified.
And to that end, do you want to make another meeting, which nobody wants to make, but should we, let's put it this way. Should we make another meeting so that we carefully consider this before it comes up on the march?
I thought we, I thought we had to have, I I'm glad we're bringing this up because I thought from our executive session, we decided that we do have to have another meeting anyway for when June is ready to report back to us.
We need to extend the meeting.
Okay, is it time? Oh, yeah. All right. So let's extend the meeting.
I want to be sure that we've included the staff and chance to review the policy going to come. It comes to us. I would welcome staff looking at it, if at all. To miss something, to highlight to us how it's going to be implemented. Yeah, reasonable?
The staff, certainly having the staff look at it to make sure that the policy regulations make sense, that they are not going to be bringing you the how to implement it yet because they that procedure side, and they'll do that later.
That's the baseline. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
I make a motion, or I move, take a motion, extend the meeting till five twenty.
Okay, it's been moved to extend the meeting till five twenty. Discussion?
Can't do that today.
Can every, but is there any duty can't do it? And we don't have to go to five twenty. I'm just. Okay. And the rest of you, extend the meeting to five twenty. I think we do. Okay. Then it's been moved to extend the meeting to five twenty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. If we need other times, do you have dates that you are able to, if we needed some time next week?
Yeah, I'm always.
Do we know that?
I I would suggest that you wait till I get back to you that that and then do a poll of the board to to figure out.
Two topics, yeah.
All right. Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
We can do that. So then there's that. We didn't even have it.
Well, I I have, I have a question and a comment. Did you find this method of trying to think through an issue helpful? And at the bottom of the page, I listed other things that we didn't address here intentionally. You already have procedures and and practices on these things. And I think, you know, Lindsay, you mentioned that the staff are working on, you know, clarifying and modifying those things. So if this kind of method works for you, you may want to consider using it for other topics as they come up.
I liked it because it helps remind us of where the ripples go.
Yeah.
Just one thing done.
Well, it this, doing this is nailing Jello to the wall and this does it in an organized fashion.
And 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 I, and I hope that the questions were intended to be open-ended so that it didn't try to lead you in any answer. But when you already had something in place, like, yeah, they can do it online, we might as well tell you as opposed to you say, well, what if we could do it, I mean, you know?
Right, it might have been a big leap, but they had done a lot of work yesterday, a lot of work.
Thank you, Steph, for that. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Judy. Alrighty.
Are we good?
I'm done.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Actually, I want to talk about the calendar.
Okay.
Are we to that section?
Yep. That sounds good.
I was just thinking that the the Corlaine paper puts a call out to people to come and the Hayden and Apple. I think even with going to Apple before they open, I think it's just going to be way too small. And just we've been getting bigger and bigger crowds.
I know, I don't know what to do about that because the only bigger place is N I C. You know, or or, I mean, not in our district and I'm, it's kind of like what? It it's.
Don't don't pay any attention to us for just the.
No, that I I honestly, truthfully don't know. I mean, because we can take our meetings to the fairgrounds. But is that, I suppose the fairgrounds are in our district. But what happens is, I mean, I understand it. I was actually going to ask Mark. This is a really good time to ask Mark. How possible is it for us to livestream our meetings so that we could have, you know, people, I mean, we're supposed to have, we're supposed to have our meetings public.
Right.
We don't have to, I mean, I don't know.
We don't, we don't have to livestream as far as that goes, from my understanding. It's something that we started doing when, if the others were more restricted. But I'm not aware of anything that says we have to. Uh, it's just for us, especially with reporting the board meetings. Uh, it's easiest to just capture the recording of the livestream and then we edit it to try to clean up it sadly.
I wonder if that, because I was looking at open meeting law and I thought we were supposed to make it available to anybody who wanted to see.
We have to, it's mentioned that you have to have a physical space available for anyone who wants to see. I I am not aware of any that says virtual and I'm willing to be proven wrong on that.
No, I'm not trying to prove anybody wrong. I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is like, what on earth should we do? Because because meeting, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, oh, my gosh, we've gonna, we're gonna move down to the, you know, the Schuler auditorium in order to we could, we can talk about it. It doesn't have to be right now and.
And and as far as when when we meet physically in our own facilities, buildings, we've got to give it internet uh, an excellent wifi at all of our locations, makes it easy to livestream. If we go to a location that's not under our direct technological control, we could have great, we could have.
So if we, if we were meeting here and there were too many people in this room, we could put them someplace else, but where else?
We could certainly overflow, but where? Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's like where?
Yeah.
Um, and this is the biggest meeting room we have in our district. We could overflow. Could we overflow at Hayden? Could we livestream that if we had it here?
We 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 can certainly have someone at at Hayden set up a a a senior thing and go the stream.
Live?
There certainly. But you're not, I I mean, someone who comes here and wants to get in can't, they're not going to want to drive twenty-five minutes then go to an overflow site.
No, no, I get that. But if I I we, being in compliance with the law is one thing. The other thing is being available to the public is another and
Right.
I absolutely, I don't know. I mean, other entities have their same problem.
Yeah.
You know, and do you have, they meet, do they decide to meet in bigger buildings or does anybody know?
I've been to public meetings before where I had to stand out in the hallway because there wasn't enough room in there. So I don't know if you have to accommodate every human being that wants to be.
Be on the planet.
Because building fire codes are still a thing.
That's true.
So.
I, maybe it's an agey question. I should, I I have sent questions into the Attorney General and they have actually written back and answered me.
Question, I don't know.
You know, it's like, what do you do?
How how far do you need to go to accommodate both physically and or?
But you've been helpful because we could have, we could have overflow live streaming and, but then that also means that there are people of varying ideas in one room that's not being supervised. At least this room has got a certain amount of supervision in it. You know, death, death in the study room. Anyway, that's all I have. That's all I wanted to ask. I I I don't know. We need to talk about it. Right now, this is our biggest room.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out there for consideration.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Because it doesn't, I I know that a couple of people came up and said, like, you know, I drove all the way over to the Hayden Library and I couldn't get in. That's, you know, can be a half hour drive for some people.
Yeah, this is what this library is for me all the time.
And it also seems that the fact that the room was so filled led to a more of a tense, tense atmosphere. That was uncomfortable.
Yes, it was.
And then there were people complaining that there wasn't enough chairs set up. Well, we didn't know how they were coming. People to set it up, they did such a good job.
Risk violating fire code.
Yeah, that room only allows for forty people and so that's what we had chairs for.
Wait a minute, I'm talking about this.
Oh, this, I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, no, somebody came up to you and like, you know, fuck, we don't have more chairs than I'm like. Because we don't know how many people are coming and how many people were here last?
And I can't control the press.
You know, but if we ask them to put out a call out, maybe we could just refrain from doing that.
We asked them to put a call out?
Um, well, I'm I'm not sure. I'm just saying if.
A call out for what maintenance?
Well, just because the last two months, I think they've been saying, they come out with an article the day before saying, show up.
Okay, that isn't a call out that's happening from the staff. That's not a call out that's happening for me. I have no idea whether it's happening from other board members. So we don't have control over what's happening in the press. Yeah. I don't know.
Can't leave without a bush and freezer. See, what I worried, I just paid attention.
I move re-adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. You got, there wasn't chocolate at your table?
Thank you for your time.